Good afternoon and welcome. Call to order, the special meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is April 30th, 2018. It's about 2:10 PM. Madam Kirk, have a glass, please.
Mayor Cranjack.
Here.
Councilperson Versa.
Here.
Ed Park.
O.
Here.
McMorrow.
Here.
M. Park.
Yeah.
Woo.
Yeah.
Borough Attorney. Borough CFO.
Here.
Borough Auditor.
Yeah.
And I'm planning to return here.
Thank you for helping us today. Appreciate your help. Let's all rise from the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in universal liberty and justice for all.
Madam Kirk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice that this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon completion of typing and proofreading of the municipal clerk.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to open up the meeting for the public for comment?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. When you're recognized, come to the microphone, state your name and address. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard? I am. Yes.
When you're written, Nine Willow Drive. Couple of questions. The first, Mayor, can you join me in the execution of reservation rights agreement? That's on agenda under Resolution 18-96.
You are...
Can you get that?
Yeah, so you're free to comment, and if you have questions, you can opere in. But it's not a dialogue today.
Mayor, can I ask again?
You can ask all you want, but it's not a dialogue.
I mean, generally, somebody will explain things if the... Well, the borough attorney's not hearing it.
Well, you want to know what a reservation of rights agreement is?
No, I want to understand what this reservation of rights agreement is. This is very specific. I've got to assume that you're going to sign it. You understand it. This is Resolution 18-96.
Right.
I mean, I hope you understand it, and I hope you can explain it before you put your signature to it.
I'm usually pretty good...
To the public.
Yeah, so I'm usually pretty good at understanding what I sign. Yeah, I'm usually pretty good at that.
Well, if you could explain it, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, so I'm going to wait on this one until you ask properly, so I can opere. Or you can ask the borough attorney if you want.
I was going to say, there's no opere. I can opere this, but that doesn't help me to get an explanation of what it means.
The resident had a question. I'm not sure I understand what her question is.
I was just asking for what the execution of reservation of rights agreement is in this case and how it applies to our council people.
In which case?
In case of 18-96 resolution. Just to better understand what it is and why it has to be signed and why it exists.
Okay, we have a borough code provision for indemnity, and it provides for exceptions to indemnity as does the law. I will be... I've already discussed with the three council members that are suing in Eastwood versus the borough, Gloria O., Ellen Versa, Ellen Park. And the purpose of it is to reserve the borough's right to seek attorney's fees back from them tomorrow. If conditions are found that meet the borough code and the applicable law.
So the borough code says we defend our council people and our employees. So that's stated in one of our ordinance.
Correct, and it has conditions and limitations as most laws generally.
Okay, so if I look at that ordinance, I'll find what those conditions and limitations are. I know negligence is always one of them, but...
No, negligence is not one of them in this case. Indemnity has to be... There has to be, first of all, something has to occur within the official... Within the course of, in this case, official duties.
Okay.
So the action that's complained of has to be within the course of official duties. If they do something out on the street that's not a council member thing...
Correct.
No indemnity.
So they're in...
That's the first provision.
Okay, so they need the first provision.
The second provision is whether or not the conduct that is complained of is found wrong by the borough and/or the court. In this case, there is pending litigation.
Who is the borough when you say the borough? He is the borough.
The mayor's council.
Mayor and council.
Yes, there would have to be... It's important to decide if there would have to be a decision by the mayor and council. In this case, there is pending litigation, the goal of which is to determine, did these council members do something wrong contrary to their official duties?
Okay.
And the level, the level that I have to rise to is not mere negligence. It is intent and willful misconduct, fraud, malice, misrepresentation, some kind of deliberate act.
Okay.
That is contrary to your official duties.
Okay, so you say...
So it's a bunch of steps that the law goes through to analyze it, but it's not just they made a mistake. There has to be a higher level to disregard indemnity, and this is found in both indemnity law and insurance coverage law.
Okay, now this says that our insurance company has refused to represent them?
Yes, that's not unusual. This is a prerogative writ action. No damages are stored against the borough.
Okay, so they don't defend...
Insurance companies don't defend...
There's no damages.
They don't defend prerogatives in general, and particularly where there are no damages asserted.
Okay.
So in this case, let's say she had just filed a regular lawsuit and saw punitive damages. The insurance company might have defended it, but not for punitive damages.
So could the borough just say that we will defend you in this? Because, but they're saying that we can, but we reserve the right to go back.
Yes.
But why do we reserve the right to go back? Why don't we just defend?
Because in the lawsuit, it makes two, I think, two counts that question the borough paying for the defense. It's a mechanism to do it, waiting until some court rules, and then we take the direction from there.
But we didn't do that in any other lawsuit.
Because it's never been claimed in any other lawsuit, at least in some here.
So they specifically say that in their lawsuit...
Eastwood lawsuit.
In Eastwood lawsuit, she specifically says that the borough should not defend them...
Should not pay for their defense.
So because she says this...
It's an allegation. It hasn't been proved, and the borough is doing the right thing by defending them. Is there a reservation? Yes, there's a reservation, because the decision is not before us. We take orders superior.
Okay, so anybody puts this in any lawsuit, one of these would have to be done, so it just depends on how a lawsuit is written.
Right, and there has to be a basis for it, and in this case, there's a basis. There's an allegation why I should see that they not paid for this defense.
And who's determining that we feel that there's a basis?
It's in the lawsuit.
Right, but you're saying that there is... Like, if anybody puts us in their lawsuit...
There has to be a nexus. There has to be a connection to some facts.
There has to be a connection, and who's determining that it's...
I just want to cut in here, because I'm... Let me... Excuse me. Carol, hold on. I have the floor. I have the floor. Okay. I don't want you giving roadmaps to litigants.
Okay.
And to their friends. All right, so she answered your question.
Okay, so let me...
You just had a lightbulb moment, I know, and I hope you're not going to file a lawsuit, which should come out of that corner often.
You know what, Mayor? That is so unnecessary.
So what else?
You are so...
Well, you've come up here very agitated today, and I'm not sure why, but...
Because of your attitude, you wouldn't discuss it. You say filing opere, and opere so I could get the resolution.
Because this isn't a question and answer. You know that. You do this every month.
Of course it is a question and ask, Norton, the mayor's...
It's common.
In this instance, I'm going a little too far with legal advice on pending litigation.
That's what I'm just trying to understand, that I have the... It's ever been said before, which no woman has...
O, Versa, and...
That's my end.
What else?
Park have rights.
Anybody else in the public?
Going on to the...
Anybody else in the public?
My next question. You see, you're just so not...
You've been up there for five minutes.
It doesn't matter.
It does, actually.
It's not in your bylaws. It's not in your code. It hasn't been voted on, so therefore the next thing is your...
Well, you're just going to act like it, so we don't want to do that right now.
Your... You make me laugh. All I can do is laugh at you. It's so sad.
Likewise.
Okay. Your borough administrator...
We are.
I'm concerned about the fact our taxes are going up so high, and we have the ability...
I don't know that they are going up.
To spend just a small amount of money to add to a position and so...
Well, how high are they going?
...are we going back to there? Well, let's just say...
You seem to know a lot of information.
I have a point of order. God, I have a point of order. I'm asking for a point of order.
Point of order to the chairman?
I'm asking for a point of order.
To the mayor. Your recommendation.
This has got to stop, all right? You have a very right to ask your questions. You have disrespect to this council and to this, the office of the mayor. I have to tell you something that I've never witnessed before. Yeah, I have also, and I have... And my other thing is I suggest you to your county's borough administrator.
All right, let's...
She hasn't ordered a time.
She has a point of order.
And she loves to admonish. She admonishes everyone.
She has a point of order. Go ahead. Are you finished?
I don't think I ever did. I'm asking you to be respectful. You always do. I will take that into account.
All right, go ahead. Ask your question.
And the next thing is, you're making very quick hiring of a borough administrator. I just wanted to ask if we've gone through our procedure of background checks before this person is fired. I know sometimes we do not do it. I'm just going to be sure we go through all the proper procedures. Thank you. But that's an incorrect statement for the record. I'm not aware that we have not done background checks there.
Well, this council has always done background checks. I can't speak to what went on before me. Yes.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Willow Drive. First, I want to address an inaccuracy in the prior speaker's comments. I get all the lawsuits. I know who's filing. There are a ton of them, and mine is the first filed by a Republican. That leaves one other source of them, and that would be the Democrats. They seem to file them nonstop. I also think we do have a constant problem with disrespect to the mayor and council, both in the nasty comments and also in the constant chattering and behind them. And third, I am going to once again admonish the council to accuse on matters in which they have a personal interest.
Anybody else in the public wishing to be heard? Yes.
Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. Recently, there's been such news coverage of the Tena Fly situation where a member of the Port Authority Commission tried to influence the police regarding the towing of a car on 9W, and accordingly, the woman ended up resigning and all sorts of letters of apology were sent out and whatever. It reminds me of the case of Louima Falema Farber in Fairview, when her boyfriend got a ticket and she appeared at the side of the ticket to try to influence the police not to give the ticket, and subsequently, she resigned from her position with the state.
Supreme Court.
Oh, Supreme Court.
Justice.
Oh, okay. I didn't...
A.
Oh, okay, all right. I didn't remember her position, you know, it's too many, too many, too many officials. But it brings to mind the situation that was brought up at the council meeting last month, where Ellen Park, our councilwoman, contacted Senator Loretta Weinberg to intervene in the matter at the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office that was pending for some, something in regard to, that was sent there probably with the police department. And I wonder if the same statutory outrage would be to Senator Weinberg, and maybe she would resign for trying to interfere in a police matter in Englewood Cliffs where she had no jurisdiction, and also Ellen Park for reaching out to her and asking for her to intervene. I really think that's outrageous, and it diminishes the prosecutor's office and Loretta Weinberg and Mrs. Park. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll reserve comment. Anybody else in the public? Okay, I have a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Going down to Resolutions 2018-93, authorize a closed session discussion on personnel. Ray Borough Administrator, can I have a motion for that? Roll call or just... Is there one favor? Okay. She's got to meet the...
Authorizing closed session at meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters. Whereas the minutes of this closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the borough attorney. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:412. Discussion on Personnel, Borough Administrator.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Okay. Anybody in favor? Can I have a motion to come out of... Excuse me. Can I have a motion to come out of closed session? All favor. Can I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-94, appointing James R. Barbario to the position of Borough Administrator? Have a vote.
Here she is now.
Councilman Versa.
No.
Councilwoman Park.
Is the resolution still...
Yes.
I'm sorry. The amount that everything is sold...
Okay, let's start again. We're going to cancel that vote. Resolution 2094 is amended to state in paragraph three, the annual salary shall be $95,000 prorated for the six-month probationary period. That's how the resolution reads, so with the insertion of that number, the acting clerk will call for a vote.
Do you have a motion in a second? Okay, so I'll start over. Councilman Versa.
No.
Councilwoman Park.
Yes.
Councilwoman O.
No.
Council President McMorrow.
Yes.
Councilman Mr. Park.
Yes.
And Councilperson Woo.
Yes.
And Mayor Cranjack.
I don't vote.
Oh, sorry. She had your name.
Yeah, that's a fact.
Only to break the tie.
Thank you.
Resolution... Thank you. 1894, that.
All right. 1895, authorized reservation of rights agreement between the borough and Councilwoman O as regards the Eastwood litigation and defense thereof.
Point of order, ma'am.
Yes.
Can we have just some discussion on that, just so you can explain what we're...
Borough council. Borough council, would you please explain that?
Yes, as I briefly stated before during the public comment, and I had discussed in detail by email with Councilman Versa, O, and Park on several occasions before the last meeting and then again at this meeting. In addition, I want the council to be aware that I invited all to call me. Ellen, unfortunately, I had mistakenly not copied her properly. I sent Gloria the emails twice. Ellen just got the emails today, and I'm sorry about that. Obviously, it was a typo. Ed called me, and I spoke in detail. I believe he has an understanding. What we are doing is reserving the borough's right, should it become, come to fruition, a decision that warrants it. We are reserving the borough's right under the indemnity code, which is referred to in this resolution and each resolution. We are infer... We are reserving the borough's right to seek reimbursement of attorney's fees should that come to fruition under various legal scenarios, limitations, and obligations. It would be for the court to decide what happens in the underlying matter, and then from there, what steps the borough would need to do if it is appropriate. And I really can't say much more than that.
Okay.
Yes. I'm sorry. Ask the mayor.
May I have a question? So I'm a little confused by some of the questions. So we're indemnified if the court says you did nothing wrong?
Correct.
However...
Yes.
It sounds like it can still come back to the council and it can decide whether we get covered or not. And I misunderstand it?
Well, you're stating a simplistic, and not to be critical, but simple, okay? If the court were to find that none of the allegations were sustained in that very large complaint, if the court were to find that no allegations are sustained, then in all likelihood, there would be a decision by the court that the borough would provide the indemnity. There might be separate arguments about it. There might be separate briefing. There might be a separate decision on that point, because normally, a court doesn't deal with coverage issues until the factual claims are resolved. So there's like the stay procedure that happens in insurance or indemnities. So simply put, if you're found innocent, it's not innocent or guilty, if you're found not responsible or responsible, if you're found not responsible for anything, or the level of proof doesn't rise to what the judge finds, yes, you had a conflict of interest, no, you didn't. If the judge finds no conflicts of interest, most likely, the indemnity is going to stand. If the court were to find pieces of it, yes, they had a conflict, they shouldn't have voted, no, they had no conflict here, they shouldn't have voted. It's up for grabs how the court wants to decide whether there's partial indemnity or full indemnity or no indemnity. These are all procedures that you will have representation on for the borough at this point. Whether or not there becomes a separate lawsuit for coverage issues or a stay of what's been claimed there, this will have to all be addressed again. But I do not believe that the borough has the right to not accept what a judge says on the indemnity issue, but it's really premature for me to really opine on that with definiteness. There are many intricacies in insurance and indemnity law, many intricacies, and the complaint itself raises many complicated allegations. So the best thing for the borough to do, my recommendation, as the mayor authorizes, because since I'm here, is look, we did that, and yet we pay for the lawyers right now. We vote, we pay for lawyers right now, hopefully that vote passes. Later, as this matter progresses, there may be a determination, an actual determination by the borough defense attorney to separate that case. It's done by a motion. It becomes a separate matter.
I have a question.
So just, I'm wondering if I answered you simply. There's no definitive answer. There's no definitive answer right now, but if you're found, if you are found and have not had any conflict, either one of you individuals to have found to have no conflicts at all as raised in that lawsuit, in all likelihood, the indemnity would stand, but I can't guarantee that to you definitively right now. No one can.
And what I asked Ann Marie to do is to draft the actual reservation of rights agreement by the end of the week.
Yes.
Which, you know, we're not here to judge or to characterize litigation. We're just here to follow the rules that we have, so that's the next step.
Yes.
If this gets approved.
Yes, and let me just follow with that. The reservations of right agreement will follow the standard language of court cases and our code and similar codes, and it is required that the borough and the party entering into that negotiate in good faith and fair dealing. You will get an opportunity with your private attorney at that point to review this agreement and make reasonable changes to it. The borough through the mayor will get reasonable opportunity. We will come up with an agreement by the end of the week that all three of you and the borough are happy with. The reason I say Friday is because the RFQs are returned on Friday, and we need to make appointments for you. So I am looking to have this now circulating, get your input on it, et cetera.
I just had to think back on what Ed was asking, because I think this is the first, right?
Yes.
I've never seen it in all my years, but...
I questioned the borough club. She does not recall in her years that this is happening.
Right, but the question is this. Had the council people...
Yeah.
Followed the borough attorney's advice? And I can only speak from my limited experience, which is since 2010. I was always advised that if the borough attorney, whoever it was, and I've worked on the three or four different ones, that they give you legal advice, if you follow it, then you're covered. Would that not have been a better scenario? I'm just asking. Had they followed the legal advice? Because I got...
But that's not appropriate for this meeting.
No, I'm not going to pass the test. I'm not going to opine, and I will say that your concerns only have to do with two council members and one small part of the allegations in the complaint.
Okay, I'm just saying...
And I'm not going to opine whether or not...
Happen again.
Disregard of my opinion is...
That's a...
That's for court.
Yeah.
But that's the question, Ann Marie, since that is such a small part that thousand pages, that was a...
338 pages.
Or whatever.
And it's been amended.
I'm not going to go forward.
My other question for you is...
Go forward.
Since it's been amended, I haven't gotten a chance to read that. I was about to do that the other day, so I don't know what the amendment was.
Was amended?
Yeah.
And I had...
Was amended?
Well, I don't know if there's more things in there that I should know about or don't know about that it's going to affect this.
Okay, Ed, read the amended complaint. I have not been able to read it yet. I've, in fact, I sent it to the assigned attorney, Eric Bernstein's office, who's representing the borough. It's his job, not mine, right? That's why we hired him. So he's certainly going to make the differentiation of the amended to the first.
But I was asking for forward. I wasn't asking for yes. Going forward, if the borough attorney gives... This is a forward-moving question. If the borough attorney gives us advice, because you're representing the borough, you don't represent any of us.
Well, what happens if she gives the wrong advice? Right?
Well, I'm not a lawyer. I'm asking you...
She said you weren't conflicted, and then you were conflicted, and now you can't vote. So who said...
All right. What's...
Guys, guys, guys.
This is neither here nor there.
Hold on. Guys, guys.
You're listening to...
We're going... Excuse me. We're going far afield, okay? If you have issues with her advice, you can deal with it. You're a lawyer. You know what to do. You can get your own advice. We... Hold on a second. We need to get through this agenda. We need to do a budget. We have these two very fine gentlemen here waiting to do a budget. I'm sorry to smoke you up. Sorry, but we really do need to get this done.
Point of order, Mayor, excuse me. For the record, for the record, Councilwoman Park just made a statement on a public video while I was... She made a statement which...
What was the statement?
I don't even know where she would have gotten that information from, regarding what conflicts I may or may not have, and who was right or wrong.
All right, here's what I suggest, everyone who has a personal issue, when this meeting is over, go discuss it outside. But for now, I just want to get through this budget.
Thanks, Ann Marie.
And let's get these votes done. If you feel like indemnifying, vote yes. If you feel like not indemnifying, vote no.
Just one last question to the borough attorney. So, are you saying that our attorneys are going to have an opportunity to amend, or change the...
Resoluti...
The resolution is written the way that it is, because we're authorizing you to execute agreement that we're not going to see today, but we're going to see later by Friday, right?
No, 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 you're a party to that agreement with the borough.
You're a party.
You will review that agreement, you will comment.
However long it takes, you will, you will review. I am not acting in a vacuum.
I am not your power of attorney, I am not signing for you. I only sign for the borough once it's approved by the council.
You have the, that's why we made it an agreement. Each of you has the ability to sign, and I will be, I will be sending it for each of you to review as you see fit, which means you can do it on your own, or you can submit it to your attorneys, your personal attorneys, for a quick review. It is going to follow the language of the indemnity and the applicable law. You will not see anything in there that isn't already discussed in my emails with you, especially the April 24th email, that is confidential between you and me, you three and me. I really did give you a detail on that. We will be fair, and the mayor will not sign unless the three of you have individually come to an agreement. It's called good faith and fair dealing, it is a contract negotiation, good faith and fair dealing. The three of us who went to law school remember those terms, good faith and fair dealing. That's what happens in a contract negotiation.
I saw it followed the resolution. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Can I have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-95, authorized reservation of rights agreement between the borough and Councilwoman O regarding the Eastwood litigation defense?
Point of one, Mayor, that the one, two, three, four, whereas that we had copies of, we're directing to reflect Councilwoman O's name, instead of Councilwoman Versa?
Type up.
I had sent you an email address.
Okay, I'm just saying, for the record, that should say Councilwoman O's name.
Two of them had problems.
It does, in the prior package.
So, make that correct, for the record.
It is already done in the official package.
Okay, so that's been corrected, can I have a motion?
So...
Okay, can I have a vote, please?
That was McMorro and M Park.
Yes. Councilwoman Versa?
If we have a chance to discuss them, good, good. Are we doing all three at the same time?
No.
Oh, no, no, you can go on, sorry.
Do I, can I vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, okay. Councilwoman Park? Are you doing ninety-five, or Councilwoman O?
No.
You're voting no?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Councilwoman O?
I could vote on my own.
Yes, you can.
No.
Council President McMorro?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Forty-two motion cases.
Thank you. Next point of Resolution 2018-96, authorized reservation of rights agreement between the borough and Councilwoman E Park regarding the Eastwood litigation defense. Get a motion, please. Roll call, please.
Woman Park.
Councilwoman Versa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Park?
No.
Councilwoman O?
No.
Council President McMorro?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Forty-two motion cases.
Next resolution, 2018-97, authorized reservation of rights agreement between the borough and Councilman Versa regarding the Eastwood litigation defense.
So...
Councilwoman Versa?
I'll recue the six.
Councilwoman Park?
No.
Councilwoman O?
No.
Council President McMorro?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Wu? Three, two, and one recused, so the mayor, I guess?
No, no.
No, it's okay?
It's okay, thanks. So, the next point of Resolution 2018-98, ratifying assignments of two matters to 2018 Special Litigation Counsel Eric M. Bernstein and Associates LLC for defense of the borough in the Eastwood versus Borough at Al litigation, docket number BER-L-2490-18, and handling of matter of volunteers' challenge regarding criminal background check. A motion to adopt that, please.
Can I ask a question? What is the second part of this resolution?
I can't speak about it, I was hoping that anyone who had a question would have called me Friday, but pick up the phone and call me, or email me, and I'll shoot you a confidential email.
Yeah, so it's a matter that's very confidential, but very important, and we can't talk about that.
And we need litigate, and we need the attorney to handle it separately from me.
Sorry.
Councilwoman Versa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Park? I'm going to recuse.
Are you, do you mean abstain?
Abstain.
Okay.
Councilwoman O?
How did I abstain?
Council President McMorro?
Yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
And it's four, or yes, it's just...
Thank you. Next, Resolution 2018-99, ratifying assignment of matters to 2018 Special Litigation Counsel Joseph Wenzel Esquire for defense.
Time out. I'm sorry, but my version has the paragraph two in it, cross that out, and just assign it to the other guy. Paragraph two, the resolution is amended to delete the paragraph number two.
So, we dealt with that issue in the prior resolution, so, again, the amended Resolution 2018-99, as amended by Borough Council just now, deleting paragraph number two, everything else remaining the same, ratifying assignment of matters to 2000, of matter to 2018 Special Litigation Counsel Joseph Wenzel for defense of the borough in Ellen Park versus Borough at Al, docket number BER-L-6876-17, can I have a motion, please?
Councilwoman Versa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Park?
Recuse.
Councilwoman O?
Yes.
Council President McMorro?
I could, I could vote on this, Ann Marie?
Yes, you're named.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Councilman Park?
Just for the record, we just lost Councilwoman Park.
Councilman Park?
And Councilman Wu?
All right, Mayor, what's your opinion?
That'd be great, thank you so much. All right, can, let's start our 2018 Budget Workshop, part, the part four. Paul and Chris, thank you for being here with us, appreciate it, and I'm sorry it's taken us so long to get to you. We'll make it up someday. All right, Councilwoman Park, can you just go outside and have your telephone call, please?
Thank you. Uh, yes, you can start.
So, I just want to report back to some of the questions that you had specifically for bond counsel. We discussed briefly the police pursuit vehicle, and whether or not it qualifies for bonding. As you know, the SUVs have become more and more popular, and the specific Ford model, there was some question of whether or not, I mean, some of them handle just like cars, and there's a very fine line now between SUVs and cars, but bond counsel reports back that currently, the Ford Explorer pursuit vehicle is still eligible for bonding. So, we do have that in the budget, and if the governing body so desires, they could remove that from the current appropriation, and that could become part of the capital ordinance, and that's up to you. The other issue had to do with tax appeals based upon...
How much? Ninety?
No, he raised it to a hundred. He raised it to, the chief raised it to a hundred.
Is that for one? Oh, for two, for two.
So, this is Chris, we're taking how much out of it, a hundred?
If you voted a...
If we do, I'm just trying to keep it...
What's in the original budget?
That's the math, yes, and the number you had last week was ninety, but you raised that to a hundred, but you reduced a bunch of dollars. So, if you have to go to page... Three, is where the police OE starts, so you'll see there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten lines that he changed. I gave you an Excel document rather than the Menunex document, so that you can see what the difference is between last meeting and this meeting, so for all the departments that did respond back with changes, you can see the changes. So, in that particular line item, the police vehicles went from ninety to a hundred.
Let's put on record that Councilwoman Park came back to the meeting.
I mean, the full amount of police vehicles, I don't know if that includes some repairs to meet any sort of, it's just purchase?
No, that was just a purchase. I would delete, I would delete the hundred thousand from here, and then we can figure out what we're going to do if anything.
Where do we have my...
She had to go to work.
Oh, she left?
She had to go to work. Put it there, we're doing Burke's Budget Workshop. Now, let me just finish what I was saying, please. I suggest we delete the hundred thousand from this budget, and then we consider if we're going to put it into the capital budget. And thank you for checking that. No problem. The next item I was asked to look into was the tax appeals, and, again, we've had a workshop on tax appeals with the bond counsel present, finance committee, and we wanted to show good faith to the division, because we know, just as a little background, that we are going to have to go to the local finance board and do a bond issue for tax appeals. So, the good faith number that was recommended at the time is three hundred. We asked Steve if two fifty is still in the ballpark, and I believe that was the question I was asked, and he concurs that two fifty would still be a fair, good faith effort, which would drop us down, if you so desire, a fifty thousand. So, that would be a fifty thousand dollar drop in tax appeal. That does not mean that we are reducing any tax appeals by fifty thousand, but we're just reducing the amount that we'd be putting in the budget for tax appeals for 2018. Okay. Thank you for checking that also. I suggest we do drop it by that fifty thousand. Any one opposed to doing that?
I think that's right, if we can get away with that, Paul, I think it's, I mean, I hate to do that, but I think under these circumstances, yeah. Because we did have that discussion, so.
I was asked at the last meeting, too, to maybe come up with an idea or two. Again, this is just an idea, I just prefer to throw it out and get your feedback. One of the new items of revenues that we discussed between Chris and I during the break there, was police traffic revenues. Now, last year, you received ninety thousand dollars approximately, you're on track to receive about seventy thousand this year. It would be a new item of revenue, it was not anticipated last year. I do have to caution you, though, any amount that we put in that category, will that be that much less surplus that we'll generate for eighteen for use in nineteen? So, we're basically pulling it ahead a year, but it is a true revenue.
Excuse me? It's twenty, the difference, or the full ninety?
Uh, no, it would be a full seventy, full seventy. So, we go from zero to seventy. No. Only because we're not on track to do ninety, if we were, I would...
That would hurt us next year, probably?
Oh, well, oh, definitely. It would be, it would be just money we're pulling from next year into this year. So, it's really a real revenue, it's nothing, there's no accounting magic to it, it's just that it's a revenue that we know about. Historically, we have not budgeted that. Last year...
So, it's not an anticipated, we have not been using it as an anticipated revenue.
That is correct, that is correct.
So, we're not really, I understand Councilman's question, that it would hurt us, but I don't think in the sense that, well, it doesn't hurt us in the way I think it might have been...
Well, it's a surplus.
Can I just add, the scenario here is actually, in my first year as mayor, for whatever reason, whatever reason, ticket revenue was negligible, and then it went up, and now we're looking at, hopefully maintaining it at least seventy.
Why don't we hold that, like, in our pocket for a little bit, see what else we can do?
Yeah, let, let...
Is that typical for municipalities to bring forward?
Let me give you a little background on the topic, I think that would be helpful, because I kind of just blurted out without giving you background. I believe most of this has to do with a project.
It's a lot of progress, yeah. But I don't, I don't know how consistent it's going to be.
Right, right. Where, where, the municipality is allowed to invoice an outside vendor for use of police for protection of whatever project is being done, whether it's roadwork, especially after the last storm, I noticed more and more telephone poles are being, either new ones are being put in, whatever, there's always a police presence. We're now allowed, the municipality is now allowed to bill the vendor for that. So, in prior years, this always existed, it's not a new revenue item. The only thing that is new about it is that last year, it became a material number, it was over ninety thousand. That ninety...
I think in prior years, we had the ability, but it just wasn't being done right. And then last year, we started doing it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understood.
Okay. So, again, we have, I think a fair number is seventy thousand, but you could go from zero to seventy, there is no, there is no definitive number that you have to pick. I wouldn't go over seventy based upon the four months' collection.
In the past, the revenue was used to offset spending, so you guys adopted an ordinance not that long ago, I think it was 2018-14 or something like that, where you made the fees, it was a hundred dollars per hour for the officer, thirty-five dollars an hour for the vehicle, and then seven percent administration fee on top of that. So, we're talking about the vehicle portion and the seven percent, and actually, it's only two percent of the administration fee, because the other five percent you dedicated towards bear, so you can't use that for this. So, you have a portion of the administration fees, which is relatively low number, but the thirty-five dollars an hour for vehicle fees is the main number. Historically, that's been used to either repair vehicles or purchase vehicles in the past, so now you are not taking that into the budget, which, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's why the number is a hundred thousand dollars this year for the police budget or not, because they were used to having that money automatically go back into their budget every year. We now have that separated, so you can either anticipate it as a revenue, or you can let it go into MIRNA, which will be funded as a plus.
The other item, again, that's available, these are not big numbers, I apologize, I can't make up the numbers, I can only tell you what I, what I can come up with. There is a little, there's a range for the reserve on collected taxes. Chris and I are both in agreement that the number that we presented during our fourth or fifth version of the budget to the administrator, had a, had a good firm number of seven hundred thousand for the reserve on collected taxes. When you do the actual calculation to the dollar, you can go down another twenty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, we don't advise, but it's not our decision to make, that's available to the governing body. So, that's a reduction in the reserve for uncollected taxes. Again, you know, with the same caveats of what we just said before.
Is there a comfort level in here?
Well, there's a statutory number that you must put in there, which is six hundred and twenty-five thousand and change.
That's not answering my question. I know the statute.
Either, oh, I'm sorry, let me just get the, the exact statutory amount is six hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine sixty-seven, that's the minimum. So, the budget amount was more than that, yes.
So, seventy-five and change. And the reason why...
So, what's the comfort level?
Well, the reason why it was seventy-five on top of that was because last year, we had tax appeals where we issued multi-year credits, and the multi-year credit for 2018 came to roughly seventy-five thousand dollars. So, I increased the reserve on collected taxes, because we are going to give, giving them credit for not being, receiving those taxes this year. So, that was why that was done with that amount. Not statutory required to do it that way, but you're not going to get that revenue, so arguably, you'll be short on your tax collections this year. So arguably, you'll be short on your tax collections this year.
So then there is no way to go?
In my opinion, no, but statutorily, yes.
Well, okay, cool. But if, if we issue credits and then there's not going to be money.
You'll, you'll have a short, you know, it'll impact your operations.
I, I, I didn't say I had great answers, I just tried to present something.
Yeah, that's okay, well, I understand, that's all right.
And again, you know, I, I want you to understand that there's some availability there. The only other thing Chris and I discussed was the canceled improvement authorizations, which we can do anytime during eighteen, which will help us for nineteen.
Yeah.
Because there's no availability this year.
Remember the cancel ordinance is even a form.
I have the active ones, so I'll just make copies of them for anybody that wants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just put on the record that Councilwoman Gloria Ove, I'll step out of the room at three forty.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy for us?
I've got, I've got one, there's a copy machine here, I'll make a bunch of copies, I just figured I'd use it to answer questions.
Okay, no, I haven't asked you to email that to me last week.
Okay, I will. I can email you.
That's all I have right now, Bill.
Thanks so much, Paul. Appreciate that.
Do we have a number of savings?
I have a call in to PSE and G because I didn't understand, Mario, we budgeted John Street one forty-five five, the lighting one forty-six five, and we only spent it on thirty-three. So the government's PSE and G is going to, let me know if we can leave it at one thirty-two. Like why was, what's the difference?
What, and right, what?
He's going to find that.
Okay.
In some ways.
Yeah.
And, you know, Mario, when we spoke about that lighting change, that's not really going to help us this year.
Right.
Councilwoman Gloria Ove, me and Joe, three forty-two. Could someone explain this paper to us?
Sure. This is prepared by Chris, he handed that out, and I'll let him speak to it more. But my understanding, Chris corrected me from wrong, and said, after the last workshop we had, we went back to our, I went back to all our department heads and asked for adjustments to their budgets between five and ten percent. Some did so, some didn't. And so you're comparing the, the before and after, right? And then that's that, the, the third column there is the actual reduction, reduction in terms of the budgets that the department heads turned in. Does not account for the things that we may agree on or discuss today, it doesn't account for the things that Paul just went over, other than the hundred thousand that we just discussed in terms of the vehicle.
Yeah, and this, this also does include the police overtime, so in addition to, because we discussed last meeting, potentially cutting that by a hundred thousand. So. Yeah, it doesn't include anything else that's not today. Doesn't include. Doesn't include.
Truck.
Doesn't include.
Got it.
So the other one.
There's an additional, addition to the suggestion thing, there's already a decrease of a hundred and fifty thousand from last meeting, right?
Yeah, so.
A hundred and fifty on top, and on top of that, we now have a hundred in police vehicles, fifteen in tax vehicles.
Right, so you have of the hundred and fifty-five, fifty-five that came from the department heads, the hundred is the police overtime, and then the other hundred and fifty was the vehicles and the tax appeals. So remember for every fifty thousand dollars that you reduce it, it's roughly nineteen, twenty dollars. So we're at about sixty dollar reduction based on this page.
Right.
Another fifty, another sixty from today, potentially, and that's just, you know, everything that we're talking about here is, you know, included in the included version.
We have twenty-four active officers, and we have a new hire dispatcher line, fifty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-four. That's a suggestion to everybody that we increase on the hiring.
Okay. So in that case, that number will come out and be a savings. Right. I would support that.
What was the cost of the unit?
Uh, new hire slash dispatcher, fifty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-four is budgeted in there. We have twenty-four people on staff.
Is the suggestion to lower that appropriation by fifty-five thousand seven hundred?
Yes, just eliminate it. That's a suggestion, fifty-five hundred seventy-four.
How is that going to, going to be?
Well, that's, that was the, if, if your overtime went over, then that would be the money that would be used to accommodate for that without having to do budget transfers because it's in the same budget. If you go over in the overtime, then we will have to fund it from somewhere else now.
Well, I think, I think the more constructive and positive way of looking at it is to just say, don't go over the budget. And we've been tracking that very carefully. What may end up being a very unpopular item at this table is that I would propose we eliminate the, the second, third, and fourth quarter mayor and council salaries.
I'm supposed to eat that?
In, in return, we'll do a community farm. Start growing our own vegetables. And that's only because, you know, if I'm asking others to, to cut their budgets, I'm also going to do something, I think, three thousand dollars.
It's not much, but it helps.
Yeah, it's, well, it's eighteen thousand minus, I guess we got paid already the first quarter.
We already got paid for one quarter, yes.
Minus that, so whatever that is.
I believe, Chris, in my limited discussion, we're trying to, I'm trying, I still was trying to figure out how to read this. I was told that she put in here for an additional hire in the tax department and also part-time additional hire in the tax department, and that she also put in for two percent raises for the individuals that are stipend positions. I would, I would make the recommendation, not the salary employees.
I think some, the two percent, some, I think it affected some people, didn't affect all.
I can only tell you what she told me, and you can let us know if it's in there or not, I was trying to figure it out.
Okay. I would love to see a part-time helper.
Well, I'm just saying, we can't afford it if this is the security.
It's not currently in the budget. A part-time in tax collection is not currently in the budget. The only extra help in the tax collection budget is the overtime that you're paying because they are.
Okay, again, I can only tell you what she told me, and she definitively told me that she had put that into this budget, so I couldn't find it.
If, if, if it's not in there, I would, I would love to see it now.
Okay, okay.
The opportunity presents itself.
Yeah, that's kind of a hard cut.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is ask around tail if anyone else has any cuts or other reductions or adjustments, and then at the end of this meeting, Chris, what I would anticipate is that you go back and do the full budget worksheet that shows us where these adjustments will be reflected in that, that the last number that we had from the prior workshop, the last page, bottom right number, which was the per household increase that you had, and I can see that the effect of this along with the revenue implications.
I, I could tell you ballpark what that would be, if that's helpful, if not, we can wait. Would you?
It's helpful.
Yeah, okay. So just doing some quick math here, and that number, based on the average home, based upon the limited conversations we have, I've got a couple of questions about the new hire, whether it's in or out for sure, but.
And taking the full, the full capital surplus that we're, the full surplus that we have.
Oh, we'll do that too, okay, so we'll talk about that in a minute. Just where we were now, we're down to about three fifty from the five oh four, that's been lowered to about three fifty, just on this minimal, the, the minimal changes.
On municipal, right?
On the municipal level, yes. Now, the new hire, just so I'm clear, the fifty-five thousand eight, the tax number?
Fifty-five thousand eight hundred.
Are we all in agreement that that is for the sake of this worksheet?
I'm going to recuse on discussing.
Okay. But I just need to know if you want to include it or not? Okay, good.
Include it by taking it out.
Right, right, right. Include it in the reduction.
Include it in the reduction, that's correct, yes.
And what are we allowed to go in the capital surplus?
One nine eight forty?
No. At least the capital surplus.
I thought you said the net.
Regular surplus of capital.
Correct, I missed that. There are regular.
Regular care surplus, okay.
Again, what happens if these are over time, those are many years.
There's no reason for that budget to be.
Oh, that, that's five hundred forty-five.
Yeah.
That's going to change around. Go to the max surplus.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Hundred fifty dollars. I think there's a couple more things that we can do, but I'm going to not talk about them.
Yeah.
So we're, we're taking the maximum amount of surplus that we're allowed, just that totally, we're at about a hundred fifty dollar increase. I think we'll have to look at the actual printout, and I think there's a couple more things we can do. And I think also because of the, the nature of the litigation and everything else, I see Babe had a battle sitting back there. We, we need to pay those legal bills too.
We're going to have, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, we may have to change that number.
Yeah. Chris, I have a question for you. What, how much of an impact would it be if we utilized the whole lines that we have in somebody's work?
There, most of them aren't funded, and you can't utilize them this year anyway.
It would be for next year.
Well, no, what I'm talking about for the roads specifically.
Oh, we don't.
That's funded.
It's, uh, it's, it's not funded by the division's terminology of what funded is and isn't, you wouldn't get what you can, what you utilize as surplus.
No, no.
If you use it to spend on roads.
Yeah, exactly.
We're not, we don't have any money in our current budget to, for roads.
Just capital.
Various acquisitions and improvements, that ordinance, if that's available, is two thousand and fifteen dash thirteen.
Hold on.
We have a hundred ninety-seven thousand in there, funded.
Okay. Wait.
Who talked about?
No, but that's, you can't touch that, that's, we need that.
Can we just stop the road project at the two, the two hundred twelve thousand dollars we had, and just pay whatever off the two hundred twelve thousand dollars, stop there, or is that not possible? Or feasible?
As of, look, Chris is looking at it. You know what, because it, I don't know why that number's in my head, but.
I don't know.
Would that give us like half a road, three quarters of a road?
Half a road.
If you.
The road was a long road.
And I'll just get to your neighbor.
It's that half road you got.
Wasn't one of the roads, Chris, a long?
Lynn Drive is a long road.
If we get a grant for it, you can, you can use that grant money up to the penny and stop completely, as long as for the roads that you're approved specifically for on that grant. To answer your question, yes, you can do that.
So for example, the, so, so, and I, again, I recall, let's say there's four roads, and the four roads cost us three hundred thousand dollars, but three roads cost us two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Can we use all the money that's in that grant, I, I believe it's two twelve, I keep using that number, it's in my head, can we use all that money to do the three roads and then just not do the fourth one?
Sure. And you just have to, what, what does the grant require you to do whatever roads are submitted?
No.
It's, it's include, it's best of the most that you can do. They, they won't let you, they won't reimburse you for anything on top of that.
No, you don't have to.
And as long as it was in the, in the original award letter, so I don't know if it, you know, sometimes with long roads, it's, you know, part one that they'll give you for the grant for in year one, and then year two maybe they'll give you part two. But as long as it's specific to the grant award, by which, again, you don't have all the information on.
Paul, isn't one of the ordinance that's funded on here except for that one?
There's three.
Please come out of the other one?
Sure. It's, uh, I'm, actually, I might. The one that might be stale is two thousand thirteen dash nine, road and parking lot and improvements to firehouse. There's six thousand eight hundred dollars in there.
Okay.
From thirteen. There's another one for tax appeals, which obviously we wouldn't want to cancel.
No.
If we have one for.
Which one, what's that, no, just trying to.
Two thousand thirteen dash fifteen.
Right.
And then the one that we just discussed is two thousand fifteen dash thirteen. But don't forget, my numbers are as of December thirty-first, Chris has the current numbers as of April.
I remember, Chris, you said there was one that had the roads in it, there was an amount that we couldn't use.
Yeah, but it's, well, it's, there's open road ordinances, but they're not funded.
Okay, they're not funded.
So, I mean, you can, you, you can, there are authorization with the spend, we do have the cash from note sales, but they are not permanently funded, which is a long-term debt.
But you can definitely spend against them, for sure.
Oh, we can, with that.
You can't cancel them, but you can spend against.
No, I'm not asking for canceling, although spending it would have no effect to the budget.
Everything that's on that list that you have and money you can spend, but we're not, it's not going to reduce the budget amount unless you're just talking about the five percent down payment.
That's all I was talking about.
And all, all I was talking, I'm sorry, Carol, that was my fault. I should have prefaced, yeah. All I was talking about is things that potentially we could cancel.
Oh, yeah.
And then utilize that money in next year's budget, that's all. Or for a new ordinance, that's all. Meaning they were kind of stale thirteen, fifteen, but the tax appeal one I would not touch, unless it's going to go into a new tax appeal ordinance.
Chris, I had a question on police salary and wages. We still have an individual listed there with no dollar amount, Dean Morrissey.
This is just an export from the system, so the account is probably just set up long enough, and it just carries over every year, like until we did this, so.
Okay, yeah, just to make sure that we're not.
Yeah, it's got no dollar amount in there, it's just not used. And every once in a while, like if you were to replace, if you were to get a new hire, I would just reuse that account number and put a new name in there. So that's, that's what happened with all the other retirees.
We have to be discussing about any potential account from the, 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 we don't want any other, you keep it all.
Look at this, nothing, she.
See projects coming?
No more.
The other wages all paid.
Four about thirteen.
I mean, I'm sorry, LG's all paid, so, all their permits are paid.
Do you know what permits they, that is, is the, you know, they got full coming.
For, for everything. The building, the park, I restored the parking deck, I'm not having to set sure the parking deck, but I know that they got all the building, everything for the building. Definitely, it's all paid.
Okay.
I mean, there might be updates along the line, but updates are usually not.
Okay.
Hi. Come, I see you got a toothpaste. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Dan. Based on our interview with James Oviedo, is the New Jersey Health Plan for employees, we're paying stuff based on the two thousand dollar budget there. He suggested we have a look at our insurance, see if our health plan.
Is that different?
And see if there was anything we could do to switch to a different plan.
Human state health benefits.
That is line two, two zero zero, last four digits, insurance, group insurance. It's a very big line item for us.
That has nothing to do with this budget. It has nothing to do with this budget.
It, it, we can introduce the, we can introduce the first week of May, that's not how we negotiate. All right, we'll, we'll look into it.
Connect this.
Thank you. Over a hundred thousand overtime.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, if the key, the, 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 the benefits.
Right. So the instituted wellness programs where all these people came in and all the staff members listened in on the wellness program and. Institute of Wellness Programs where all these people came in and all the staff members listened in on the wellness program, and that was, that enabled them to reduce some premiums there. But they had to sit in for an hour, two hours every month, just listen to how to take care of yourself better.
Could you just explain from my own information, the police, that's a thousand, we have three hundred fifty thousand. So that's an item that the municipality pays for this door.
Cost of that.
And that's separate from the school security.
School security would, would be outside duty, or are you talking about?
No, the school's out, they're guarded.
Oh, by, by an officer?
No, by retired persons.
But that would be in there, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would.
Let's just go across and across, can you just add one across in there?
Sure.
Chris, quick question, how much do we have in our capital last, from last year? Capital fund?
We have no capital before.
The whole?
That's the capital budget, that's, those are, that's everything we have. For caps for appropriations, and for every ordinance that we have that exists right now.
Oh, that's just before I got a hundred, we put in one.
Oh, the capital improvement?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Uh, don't have the financial statements?
Yeah.
I thought I looked for it here.
Yes, if you could scan that for your convenience, Chris, we get three time. No.
Okay.
I got it, got it.
Estates, uh, yeah.
Sixty thousand, sixty thousand three thirty eight sixty.
What about surplus?
Oh, yeah, we didn't mention that.
Yeah, so the capital improvement fund that Chris just said was sixty thousand three thirty eight sixty, that's for down payments. And then this capital surplus, we're using two hundred of two sixteen. In the revenue, out of the capital surplus balance of two hundred sixteen thousand, we're using two hundred thousand of it. As a revenue.
Okay.
Out of the capital improvement fund, sixty thousand three thirty eight sixty is for down payment.
So that's what we have in our capital improvement fund right now.
Sixty thousand three thirty eight.
So, and we're looking to put another hundred in there.
That's my understanding.
Okay, so there might be some wiggle over there.
Exactly.
I just want to bring that to the council's attention, okay? That's an area that is not in here, it's going to be on that other sheet that you have, that you got two meetings ago, which shows all expenditures for capital. So, no, the one that falls out, I'm looking for.
So fifty thousand gets you a million, so we expect that we have a little over three million.
No, one of us, I don't know if you were sitting next to me last time and I showed you the, you sit right here.
Uh, you can do this real quick.
Do you have yours though? The sheet, the capital sheet. Is that from you? Yeah, it's all right, I found it, I'll do it. Look at this, you need to look at this and figure out, or for this.
Can I ask you something?
Sure. So this, we've got some wiggle in there, we need to study that, and that's why I. And what they put in, and, um. According to what's the oldest thing, we need to introduce May ninth, and I don't know, counting backwards from those deadlines, what we have to be done by. So we may need to have another special meeting before May ninth, given whatever updated papers he's going to give us. We're gonna have to have another special meeting, because, and I would, I recommend this is one of the, because I think we have so much of a money in ordinance and all that stuff.
The vehicle care services are higher. Which shows, what's the digits? I have thought that that number would have been down last night because of the new hire, new hire. So that the surplus and the, the balance on the market.
Yeah, I remember that when Chief Ramon was here, he said that the three, he named, he named the three other ones, and then how much time they've been around, the ages of them.
It's only come down by two thousand from last year, and last year we didn't have that.
I'm happy to check with him, see if we can redo that number, look at, just sharpen the pencil a little bit.
Yeah. What I would like to do is see where we have the issue.
We have, we do have five thousand dollars in overtime under administration and executive. One zero zero one, the very first line item. Traditionally, we'd never had that line item, it never performed. One zero zero one, zero zero nine.
Yeah, it was something that Karen had asked, because they were gonna, if they needed extra help in the administration office. I just put the numbers in.
I suggest we.
But now, but keep in mind, the salary is higher for the new administrators, so it's going to make up some.
Right, right.
We also lost time between administrators, right?
I don't know if we have payment for through time, that is due, I haven't gotten any of the final figures yet, so I, till I find the numbers.
There's some of those things.
Yeah, till I get final numbers, I, I don't know if this needs to go up or down depending on that.
Well, we know that the administrative allowance is, is one thousand one hundred and sixty dollar difference.
Oh, yeah, eleven hundred dollar difference there.
Yeah.
Regardless, plus the due time due, some gets on top of it.
Due time?
I don't know if there's any final, if you can, uh, check it, if it's perfect, if it's time, or anything like that, just to actually get final numbers.
Yeah, I think we will, just note that we should probably be pretty comfortable removing that five after checking on it. I think it should be five, Chris.
Okay.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Admin salaries.
Five thousand. And in the calculations, you want to see it with the full five forty in surplus, the additional five forty? Five hundred forty thousand surplus. Just like, I'd like to recap just to. I was just going to recap everything we're talking about, one at a time, I just want to make sure that we're all on board, because I don't get to vote, so. I'm adding seventy thousand in police traffic and revenues. I'm adding five hundred and forty thousand to surplus. I'm reducing appropriations by five thousand admin salaries and wage. Overtime, a hundred thousand. The police pursuit, we're moving to capital, that's a hundred thousand. Tax appeals, fifty. The new hire, fifty five thousand, eight, eight, what?
Eight seventy nine.
Seven four.
Eight seventy four.
Eight seventy four. Mayor and council salaries and wages, thirteen thousand five hundred. And I was not sure what the agreement was or the consensus was on the percentage increases for the non-contractual.
Thanks, it's bill things every individual wants, so I don't have a total dollar amount.
So it's not contractual, there can.
There's very few non-contractual.
I don't know what non-contractual definition is.
Oh, we're not part of the body.
Nobody wants.
Five people now, or something like that, that aren't contractual employees.
Can you send that to us in an email?
Send you what?
Well, I don't know, we'll go with what's in the matter, but I don't, I don't want to start discussing employees.
Who, who is considered non-contractual?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave that out for now, and then you can.
Well, the five hundred and forty thousand dollars, I, I'd like scenarios, because without using any of the five hundred and forty, which is what we have on the bill.
The total surplus available for, for use is a million eight forty. The last version, version five, I call it, of the budget, we were using a million three. So the difference between a million three and a million eight forty was five hundred and forty thousand. Obviously, anything between zero and five forty would be the scenarios. Zero meaning a million three. And the high end meaning a million eight forty, but there's potential scenarios of.
Right, you do it with, maybe at the million three with all these.
Other than that.
Right, and then.
Two, two, seven.
A hundred, a hundred thousand.
A hundred.
Only, yeah, I would like to see minimal increments and see if we can.
A hundred thousand is nineteen dollars, yes, for every hundred thousand, it's nineteen, so, I mean, uh, thirty cents.
The council has to see the hundred thousand dollar increments, and what that means, and still look to figure out through this budget process, how to do that without touching our costs, if possible.
Well, I mean, seventy thousand is also going to, it's subtracting surplus, seventy thousand that you would have otherwise practiced surplus this year, and that would be used to, and that was the outside duty, so that's also.
I didn't hear that, I didn't hear that on the list.
Yeah, that was the seventy thousand dollar increase in revenue, anticipated revenue.
No, I know that, but I didn't hear that in the mayor's list before, or Williams' list.
It's not on the list.
Yeah, I know that, I'm talking about now to recap.
Yeah.
That's the first thing we said.
The, just to give you an idea, the five forty surplus increase represents two hundred and five dollars in savings total, just that one number. So if we, if we take that out, that's, you know, if we leave surplus alone, and everything else with all the other changes, you'd still have two hundred and five dollars from the local level increase, without that increase in surplus. On the average chest.
My, my confirmation. But that's just.
I agree with that. Let's just do one of those.
Okay, so when is our next, you can check the calendar.
Right, of course. Five for me.
Make what?
With the four.
What size?
Six threes.
Six threes. Although, I'm going to have to bring my kids to your, but, yeah.
I don't know what day we're talking about. This Friday night, but it's six thirty, Mike doesn't want this. This, is this, is this time available, the eighth day, again? Is it? Good for me.
Good for me also.
But the nights are the hard ones. Days are the easy ones.
How about Monday, I can do two, four.
Monday, Thursday, next one?
Yeah, the seventh.
I think, you know, that's not leaving much to hunt for, that's prepared for Wednesday.
Do you think we're going to need another time after that?
Then we introduce the budget.
On the ninth, I know, so we should bang it out on the next meeting, regardless of what.
And we what? They have to get it prepared.
It's tight, but.
It's tight, yeah. Okay, what?
Depends on the change of the meeting.
So, Thursday or Friday, is anybody available, Thursday or Friday? Friday, Thursday is okay.
Thursday during the day or evening?
I'll do whatever, I'll work around you guys, whatever you say.
The only thing, Thursday the third?
Yeah.
I can't do evening.
Day?
Day is okay.
Day, two o'clock, Mark?
I shouldn't do days.
You can't do day?
Can't do day on Thursday. I have a meeting on Friday.
What time?
Three o'clock.
What about morning?
Friday morning, wide open.
Friday morning, I can't do.
Okay. Ten o'clock, Ellen?
Yeah, ten o'clock, good.
I can't do Friday morning, I, first Friday, early month, I've got finance committee meetings.
Can anybody come in your place here? I, I'm just trying to make this work.
You would like to come.
No, I don't know, I don't, I don't.
You know, I prefer to have this.
No, I meant for business.
Business, I would mind.
Should we try Monday again?
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Monday, two, four.
Can we do one to three?
Let's do this, let's do Monday.
I'm a little nervous, we go to Monday.
Monday to the fourth, yeah, for some reason, for some reason, which we get is down on Monday, we'll have a special meeting later in the week.
Okay, can we do one to four, one to three on Monday?
Yes.
All right, because I had an issue with the, with the kids today.
I have a Monday meeting in New York, so I'm going to do two to four, maybe Monday.
And I have to leave in the middle and go get them, because no one got them today, they were standing at the point for twenty minutes.
If we, if we're tight to introduce on the ninth, then.
Do a special meeting.
Special meeting, but we can't do it right.
So Monday, two to four?
They want the first, they wanted the first scheduled meeting, but if you have a special meeting for the budget, I don't think anyone's going to argue with that.
What? They're the professionals, not me, you know, we're.
The suggestion is, the suggestion is for the first scheduled meeting, but if there is a special meeting that you're having to introduce the budget, I don't think anyone is going to argue with that.
Okay, so as long as everybody understands, we have to make ourselves available for a special meeting to introduce the budget, cannot be introduced on the ninth.
They always want a budget, so anything you need to do to get a budget introduced. I have two o'clock on the seventh, is that the consensus?
Paul, you can look at your schedule and please anticipate that we may need a special meeting to hold certain dates open for us for the introduction of that budget case.
Well, it'll get done, we'll get it done.
Paul, I will not be available week of the thirteen, we'll be following back.
Okay.
We've got plenty of time between introduction and, I mean, if you're talking about a special meeting, right?
Right.
Is that going to be problematic for?
As long as the decisions are made on Monday, no, no.
It would, first like the documents, first Monday, that way you've got a question to try to get through to.
The only thing is, I don't have all the individual line items that would need to be changed, I can do that.
I can just, I'll send you the same exact.
Condemned, perfect, okay.
It's okay, just letting you know.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Is someone over here?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. Kathy, if you could let the council, the person, council one off.
I'm going to let Lizette know, she can let them.
Okay.
She'll be back in in the morning.
One discussion.
Yes, just the budget, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll.